Okay, I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November 13th, 2024 to order. This is the Notice to recess an executive session pursuant to ARS 38431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, we may vote to go into executive session, which would not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney on any item listed on the following agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3. If we can go to roll call?
Carol Mandino?
Present.
Bob Harris?
He's on here.
Bob Harris? Christine Shi?
Here.
CJ Lukey?
Present.
Mary Norton?
Present.
Ian Sharp?
Present.
Megan Weller?
Present.
Bob Harris?
Present.
Thank you.
So, we're going to go into public comment. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within their jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. Is there any public comment at this time? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go on to the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on Wednesday, October 23rd, 2024.
I move to approve the minutes from October 23rd, 2024, as written.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
So it's been, the motion was made by Mary Norton and seconded by Ian Sharp. Is there any discussion? All those in favor for approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. So then we'll move into public hearing on the US Federal Courthouse CUP request. It's PZ 230004203.
I just want to make sure really quickly that it's going to the live stream.
While you do that, I'm gonna, might need to take like a two-minute recess real quick.
Okay, we seem to have some technical difficulties, so we'll be taking a slight recess. Thanks for your help. Okay, I guess we can resume our meeting. Thank you for being patient with us.
Thank you for your patience. Good evening, thank you Chair, Vice Chair and Commission. Bethan Hang, I'm one of the planners for the City of Flagstaff. Tonight, the item before you is a request for a conditional use permit for the US Federal Courthouse proposed for 1535 West Route 66. The applicant is in attendance tonight. So just a brief overview of this project and why you're seeing this request tonight. As mentioned, the subject property is located at 1535 West Route 66. And as mentioned, the proposed new use is a federal courthouse. A federal courthouse is categorized under government office, and government often is a listed category under office use. Now, within the light industrial open zone, which this subject property is zoned as, an office use is permitted, but with a conditional use permit. So that's why you're seeing this request tonight. So a brief vicinity and surrounding use map, you have it there on the screen. To the west and east and south of the site, it's also zone light industrial open. The subject property, as well as the mentioned properties, are all part of the Woodlands Village Unit 2 industrial subdivision. And across the street on West Route 66, it is zone highway commercial. It's the West Village Commercial Area subdivision. So I have on screen the site plan. This is the proposed site plan. And this project entails a 38,426 square foot federal courthouse building, which includes offices, meeting rooms and courtrooms. The site is sized 4.05 acres. So really quickly, the floor plan, here's the first floor plan, second floor plan, third level floor plan. And as mentioned, this building includes offices, meeting rooms and two courthouses, or sorry, two courtrooms. Now, in order for staff to recommend approval for a conditional use permit request, three findings need to be met. So the first of which is the conditional use is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code and the purpose of the specific zone. Now, as mentioned, the subject property is zone light industrial open. And I have here on the screen the purpose statement of the LIO zone. And also, as mentioned, an office use requires a conditional use permit to operate within that zone. And so by pursuing this request tonight, this project is meeting that first finding. So second finding is the conditional use will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare, and this includes the following. Must be operated in compliance with this permit, so that being the conditional use permit. No anticipated noise, smoke, odor, dust, vibration or illumination. No known hazard of explosion, contamination, fire or flood, as well as no unusual volume or character of traffic. This project is also meeting this finding. So the third and last finding, as well as the really lengthy one, is characteristics are reasonably compatible with uses permitted in the surrounding area per the following as listed on screen, and I'll go into detail in the next few slides. So first of which is access, traffic and circulation. So this project proposes two driveway accesses off of West Route 66 to the site. A TIA, or Traffic Impact Analysis, was required for this project. And West Route 66, that being a ADOT road, ADOT was also participating reviewer with this project. At the time being, in the most recent review process, which was site plan review, ADOT was a participating reviewer, but we didn't necessarily get a concrete suggestion or recommendation from them yet. But a potential improvement may include widening West Route 66 with a bike lane. That might be something the applicant could talk about more if you have any questions about that. But specific to the site, pedestrian connectivity is proposed on site, and the required number of parking spaces are also being met on the site. So for adequacy of site, open space, resource provisions, this is within the Resource Protection overlay. It is meeting that minimum requirement for forest resource points, and there are no slope protections on site, so that requirement does not apply. Due to the scale of this project, civic space requirements were required. That was a component of this project, and I can answer any questions about that later on, but that component's being met with this project. For noise, light, visual and other pollutants, it's not anticipated that the project will have or create any noise, visual, other pollutants into the area. The site is well maintained. And for style, citing a structure in relationship to surrounding neighborhoods. So for CUP requests, architectural design standards are required to be met to the maximum extent feasible, so this did apply to this project. I will note that since this is a federal courthouse and it is a federal project, that there were federal mandated architectural design elements. So that front-facing facade doesn't incorporate building articulation, but that was due to the nature of this being a federally mandated architectural standard. For landscaping and screening, that requirement's being met. They provide a landscaping plan, and that's meeting our regulations for landscaping. For impact on public utilities, the site is connected to existing city sewer and water services, so there are no new offsite improvements that are required for this site. And any signage and outdoor lightings will be required to proceed with the applicable permits for that. Dedication and development of streets, I touched briefly on the TIA. Essentially, the same things that I had mentioned before in terms of ADOT being a participating reviewer. So I believe that's slightly still in conversation, but in terms of the scale of what falls within the property lines for this project, it doesn't affect that. Impacts on resources, no impacts to cultural resources have been identified on site. And the two extra findings for heritage preservation and transit don't apply to this project. So this project did undergo public participation. So the applicant notified property owner So the applicant notified property owners within a 300-foot radius of the site for this CUP request. And they also held a neighborhood meeting on August 15th, which was a Thursday. There were two neighborhood attendees. There were no substantial concerns. I believe there were also in support during this neighborhood meeting. Staff has also not received any public comments to date. My understanding is the applicant has not received any either. And since the first neighborhood meeting did not have any substantial concerns emerge from that, the second neighborhood meeting requirement was waived by the planning director. So with that, in accordance with the findings, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve conditional use permit PZ-23-00042-03 with the following one condition. And at this point, I will open it up for questions and discussion.
Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Heng, I'm Chair. I had one question. It wasn't called out on the elevation. What's the material for the 10-foot security fencing?
So you're correct. It's not included here on the building elevation. The applicant did send to staff certain images on what they were scoping out for, what they could potentially use for that. That might be something the applicant could answer if that's okay.
It's shown up on the site plan. It's just not called out. It looks like it's might be wrought iron or I don't know if it's wood.
Can you come up to the... And give your name and address for the record, please? Name and address.
Gabe Halsey with Lucardi Construction, the contractor for the development. Address is 1570 Linda Vista Drive, San Marcos, California. The fencing in question, it will be a wrought iron ornamental fence, security grade. We're vetting that out with the GSA requirements for their security.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff or for the applicant? Yes, Mary?
Just had a question. When I was looking at the site and on the parcel viewer, the ownership of this land, as well as the parcel directly to the west, are owned by the same ownership? Is there any plan for the parcel to the west? Or are they just doing, just developing on this one?
Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Mark Bauer, Eastlake Government Properties, 830, excuse me, 4655 Executive Drive, Suite 830, San Diego, California. Yes, Eastlake Government Properties controls the three parcels. The two parcels that were combined to become 1535 West Route 66 is the courthouse development. The third parcel to the east is going to remain vacant. No current plans for development. So we'll simply hold the property in its current state.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mary?
I just had another, I was just curious, you know, about the architectural variances. Obviously, it's set by the federal guidelines for this type of a building. How much of a variance does it differ from the City of Flagstaff's architectural? Just kind of out of curiosity.
So we have standards that require articulation on walls over 75 feet, that they're supposed to jog at least 10%, I think it is, of the height of the wall. In this case, that became a real security concern for the courthouse, that you're basically creating these like nooks and crannies for nefarious activities or whatnot. And would require additional security cameras, stuff like that. Because it's a federal requirement, staff determined that we could, we had some flexibility to waive that requirement because it's a higher jurisdiction. So we went ahead and did that on this project.
Anything with regard to building materials or...
I believe that was the only, right?
I think on the south facing facade, there is a larger percentage than the typical 25% for stucco. But that is not visible from right of way, which is the requirement for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, does the, I was going to say architect or the applicant have any presentation? Thank you. Does anybody want to make a motion? CJ?
I'll make a motion. Let's see. Can you go back to that slide for me so I can read it?
Of course. Trying to get it in in five seconds.
Thank you. Okay, great. So in accordance with the findings, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of conditional use permit PZ-2300042-3 with the following condition. The development of the site shall substantially conform to the plans as presented with the conditional use permit application.
Almost. We're not, you would not be recommending approval because the Planning and Zoning Commission approves conditional use permits? So if we just want to tweak that part, that you would be approving the conditional use?
Okay, great. So the Planning and Zoning Commission approves. Second.
So the motion has been made and seconded? Is there any discussion?
Who's seconded, please?
Oh, Christine. And, you know, my only comment would be that would this preclude, or maybe it's a question, would this preclude residents from northern Arizona having to go to Prescott or Phoenix for federal court?
This new facility would allow greater accessibility to justice in the greater surrounding area of Flagstaff. That is the intent of the new courthouse.
Yay, okay. I probably only have a few years left that I'd be on that, in that call, but yay, okay. Hearing no other discussion or questions, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the great staff report as well.
I do have one question, though, that I wanted to get through all this. Are there any uses or ideas for the existing courthouse? Does anyone have anything going on?
There's not currently a federal courthouse in town, is my understanding. This would be a new facility, so.
That's why, if you were called to federal court, you'd have to either go to Phoenix or Prescott, I think, at this point.
And I'm assuming Chair is in referencing to being called to jury?
Jury duty.
Not like that you'd be, you know, having to defend yourself in federal court.
Never, never. Anyhow, yeah, so we'll move on to miscellaneous from commission members, to and from commission members or staff. Alex?
So our next scheduled meeting is the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so I will be canceling that. So feel free to make your Thanksgiving travel plans without obligation of a P and Z meeting.
Can I tell a little aside? I mean, while people are leaving, very, very, very long time ago, I was on jury duty for, what do you call it, the grand jury? I don't know if anybody served grand jury duty, but you hear all sorts of cases. And usually, we served on Thursdays. But they moved it to a Wednesday. It was the day before Thanksgiving. I happened to get in a car accident that morning. So I didn't, I called and said, I have to, I've got to be here. I'm in this car accident with, it was seven other vehicles. And now that I know Christine where you live, I'm just going to tell you, if you're on Linda Vista coming down Fourth Street, it was black ice and seven of us hit each other in different accidents. It was seven different accidents. Anyhow, I couldn't go to jury duty because I was in that car accident. And I, the next week when I showed up for jury duty, grand jury duty, everybody was like, you planned that? I was like, no, I did not plan, my car was totaled. I did not plan to get in a, oh yeah, everybody was going like five miles an hour because there was construction there. We just couldn't stop our cars because it was black ice. So anyhow, so they were like, you planned that? And I'm like, no, why? And they go, we were here till 11:00 PM at night because, and I won't go over the case, but it, well, it was a gentleman who had an insurance company.
Yeah, we're still on the record, so let's not.
Oh, so anyhow, so, sorry, I should tell this afterwards. I should adjourn the meeting, huh? Anyhow, for the, they were there till 11:00 PM that night. And I didn't have to be there. But it was because the, I don't remember if it was the feds or the state, every single charge, he read verbatim the law every single time. And there was like 102 charges against this one person. Anyhow, just as an aside, so thank you for canceling the meeting on Wednesday, or Thanksgiving. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. It's 4:39 PM. Thank you.